Okay, now we're going to return to item number 11, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn. Docket number 16-2689, block 285, lot 6. This is 112 Atlantic Avenue in the Cobble Hill Historic District. A gas and service station built circa 1960, and the application is to demolish the building and construct a new building.
Good morning, Commissioners, I'm the fellow preservation staff. The application is to demolish a gas station and construct a new building located on the southeast corner of Atlantic Avenue and Henry Street in the Cobble Hill Historic District. The new building is proposed to be a four-story brick residential building with commercial on the ground floor. And the proposed building will feature a garage on Henry Street, which will require curb cut at that location. And the second-class rear facade and balconies will be visible from Pacific Street over a one-story building on that block. The architect is here to discuss the project until...
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Stephen Burns from BKSK Architects. This is a new building on Atlantic Avenue replacing a gas station. Let's see, where is our first ward here? So, there we go. This is the district, and the site, I think it's on the wall behind the arch, it's at the edge of the district. This is the site here. This is Atlantic Avenue. This is Henry Street here. The district kind of wraps around greatly to the south and east. What's interesting is that this is a sandborne map from 1901, which shows the site back then, and it was a series of kind of generic buildings like you see throughout the district, red brick, listen, brownstone trim. But what was also interesting is next to it, again, this being sort of the edge of a residential neighborhood, there was a factory building that still exists that actually goes to the back street on Pacific Street. You can also see that there was a laboratory building on the corner there, actually, which is now gone, but the houses next door were replaced by a more commercial-looking building, which is there today, which is this one here. This is the site today, showing the gas station. This is the photo of what was there before. Again, these are generic buildings. What was interesting, this is Atlantic Avenue, and this is Henry Street. And for some reason, there was some sort of quirk of settlement that I don't quite understand. There might have been an old wooden colonial house that was there, I'm just, you know, surmising, before the land was properly platted. And in any case, there was these buildings that were built, but there was this intrusion into the sidewalk that was a one-story building with kind of a storefront that the glass wrapped the corner. A very unusual situation. Actually, there's a little memory of that today, in that the sidewalk has a big projection at that point, that the building is no longer there. So this is the, some pictures of the adjacent buildings, which have something to teach us, or we were interested in when we designed our building. This is the gas station. To the left is a building that initially seems sort of regular and symmetrical, but then we noticed that the windows in the middle, while the same width overall, when took together, actually sort of split down the middle. Then the next building, this is the one that was a factory, a furniture factory originally, kind of appears to be a single building on the outside, but it's actually, was it, maybe it was added onto, it was a double. But if you see, there were three windows, and then there's a bracket here, and then there were four or five more windows on the other side. And the bracket was sort of to mark the division between the two buildings. Actually, at the top of the building, there's another elongated bracket. So again, a way of articulating something that seems to be one big thing into what really was two things. Across the street on Henry Street, this is our site here, the gas station, and this is on Henry, and this is a building type that you see often when buildings kind of turn the corner. It has maybe three or four windows in the front. But on the side, notice that it has a couple of windows, and then it has wide swaths of masonry. So it's like two windows wide, one window wide, and then three. This is another building that's a few blocks away. It just shows some interesting window design, where windows are joined vertically. Other things to note in the district are how, in some corners, the corners are celebrated. This, I can't read what says there, but there's a building here which has a corner treatment that's very special. There is a new array of buildings, townhouses, I think, on Converse Street, in which the corner is handled in a special way. Another building that actually, when I was on the commission, was approved during my time, this is further down on Atlantic Avenue, showing sort of bigger swaths of glass set into brick surrounds. This building is the building that I mentioned behind on Pacific Street, which is a more sort of, it's not a residential building, it's a little more industrial or commercial-looking. And that was next to a park that used to have the laboratory, that shows this mix of buildings at this edge of the district. This is a building a couple blocks away on Henry Street, showing again sort of a corner window treatment. So this is the panorama, looking along Atlantic Avenue, showing the gas station. This is the panorama showing our view here. The other way on, now on Henry Street, this is the gas station, adjacent buildings, this is Henry, this is the one with the wide swaths of masonry. This is showing our building. This is showing it now at a bigger scale. And what we've done is, we've taken the idea of sort of a rusticated base, and rather than recessing just the same brick material, what we want to do, and where are the samples? Are they, could you put them on the table? What we propose to do is to use, and we're not exactly sure how it's going to be done, but the idea of having sort of a metallic glaze, you look at the brick sample, let's me put on the desk in a second, that has zinc on it. But the idea of a gray sort of metallic material placed on the brick is what we're proposing at these darker bricks at the base of the building, and actually at the top. And what we want to do is sort of allude to, even though we know it's frankly one building, it's not four separate buildings. It's a new building with, you know, various apartments that are all serviced by a single elevator. But that, the markings that we see below are also, the little markings up at the top too, just to give a sense of rhythm, that it's not a horizontal building, but you get the feeling of verticals as well as horizontals. The ground floor has, will have storefronts. We actually have to go to the BSA on this, because it's through a quirk in zoning, it's zoned only for residential, even though the neighborhood has widespread horizontal. So we need to go to landmarks first to get a sign off from then, and then we go to the BSA.
To get what?
To get an approval for retail, for retail on the ground floor.
It's a zone for...
It's not a lot, it's not as bright. So we have proposed storefronts below, and you'll see on the ends of the building, we have, these are fire exit doors, so we have sort of a sense of bigger masonry on the edges of the building. So what we've done is, we've taken sort of the idea of the rhythm of these narrower windows, which is characteristic of the wall-bearing architecture, and we started out with sort of this narrower rhythm, then it gets wider as it goes across the facade. And then we wish to celebrate the corner of the building with a larger, more glazed articulation at the corner. You'll see the storefronts going along the base, and again, the idea of this big swath of masonry, like we saw across the street, into which we have a store window inserted, which is about six foot by eight foot. This is looking at the other elevation, this is the Henry Street elevation, the storefronts now wrap around, but the same idea for the narrower masonry becoming wider masonry. I would say by 80%, of the site, being the corner gas station, has a curb cut. So we propose to remove all of the curb cut, and the only area that doesn't have a curb cut is the area where we wish to put a curb cut. So the proposal is to have a garage that only services the people in this building, there'll be nine spaces, and this would be treated very similarly to the storefront, except we would use frosted glass. So obviously, I'm not seeing into it, it'd be a whiter color glass. And then next to that is the lobby of the building. The treatment of the windows would be in black metal. The window panes are horizontal, not vertical. We don't want to, we want, we want to seem like this is not the 19th century, but something which is, you know, more of our time. And the color, however, at the storefront would be gray, sort of to tie into the gray zinc treatment that we're using, again, here and up at the top in a few instances. So this is a perspectival view of it. Actually, one thing that I wanted to point out that is, noticed a small error, we're proposing, you know, for the storefronts, obviously, there would be signage. We wrote down signage, and our intent was for the signage to be exactly the same height as the adjacent signage. And I just noticed this morning that it looks like it's a little too big. So, and we actually don't know how tall that is, because it's way up in the air, so we have to go get on a ladder to measure it. We think it's about 12 inches. So what we're proposing is signage that is the same height as the signage here with the backlighting option. So back to the perspective here, you notice the brick treatment goes up, and then this sort of zinc metallic glaze continues up, sort of like a zipper going on this masonry element on either side of the corner window. And then at the top, there's an abstracted, very flat, boldly projecting cornice. Now, we can project two foot six inches, which is a wonderful thing. Now's a sunscreen, we're not constrained by the 10-inch that used to prevail. And above the windows, the window, the bricks become soldier courses, which step up to give a more strong reading of a vertical pier. So we want to emphasize the verticality in a building, which itself is horizontal. This is now a close-up view around the corner. This would be the gray treatment, alluding to the gray that we see in the zinc. This is the, the, actually, the door would be this high. And again, another one of the fire exit doors. So this is the view in context, seeing it looking east or west on Atlantic. This is looking the other way on Atlantic. Now, we have various things on the roof. There is some mechanical equipment, which is visible from nowhere. So zero visibility on the mechanical. We have an elevator bulkhead, and so I just wanted to point it out that's there. And actually, one thing, I don't necessarily point it as a model, but next door, this factory building, there's a huge elevator bulkhead right at the facade, so it's kind of an interesting thing that's right nearby. This is now looking from Henry Street. This is looking from Henry, looking the other way. Where, oh, 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 now, I'm sorry. If you see the red here, this is the bulkhead. And I think, was the bulkhead visible on that shot?
Yeah, it's just hard to see the red.
If you look, do you see, do you see the red there? So that's the, it's hard with the trees.
What's the material of the wall?
It's stuccoed.
Okay.
And here, is there anything visible there? Can't remember.
No.
No, not there. Then, then the other view, we didn't know initially, but pretty soon after we were designing, we walked around the corner, and there's a gap in the fabric where there's a one-story building, and we realized that our building would be visible from the back. So this is it now, there's a one-story building, and this is it proposed. So this is our building, which would be stuccoed in the rear with various windows and balconies that would have black edging on the balcony itself and the railings. And then at the corners of the building, we need to have some mechanical shafts for a potential restaurant. So we've decided actually to make that in red brick. And what's interesting is, if you look at these interior spaces, you see it's primarily actually either stuccoed or painted white in these rear yards, with some vestiges of red brick. So this sort of adds to this mélange of stucco and red brick, but this would be primarily stucco.
Is that, that dark red box on top, is that your building too bad?
Yeah, that is one of these mechanical shafts. And then right next to it is the elevator bulkhead.
So, but you chose to, a color that actually contrasts against the sky as opposed to...
Yes, it was a choice to make it kind of like this mix of things that's going on in the courtyard, sometimes brick and sometimes white or stucco. So this is an elevation here. This is the other elevation. This is the elevation.
The windows are steel or aluminum?
The windows are, they're aluminum, but that looked like, there are these new windows that are being used as, like, replacements for steel windows, that are very thin line, but they're aluminum. This is the floor plan, showing the garage in the basement, and I guess going up, we don't care about the apartments. The rooftop here shows, this is the elevator bulkhead, which is set back, so that's why it's so minimally visible. These are the stairs, and then there is like a little farm of HVAC units, which will be very low, not visible at all from the street. And then these are the two mechanical shafts, only visible from the rear. Let me see if I missed anything here. The elevator bulkhead is 16 feet seven inches above the parapet. And I guess the other thing to talk about is just that we see that we have a lot of depth in the facade. At the storefronts, the brick will recess about 12 inches. At the lobby, the brick will recess two foot one inches. The apartment windows in the upper floor, we have an eight-inch brick reveal to give a nice gutsy feeling to the building. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions? Yes, Ari?
I have two questions. Did you say that, not the building adjacent, but the one over, the white building, are you calling that the factory building? Is that...
Yes, you look at that 1901, it was a furniture factory.
Uh-huh. Okay. And then, my next question is, how would you characterize your building? I mean, is it alluding to other, another kind of factory, to the factory typology that would have happened after that white building? Or is it sort of loft building? I mean, what, it's, it's very hard to figure it, because it's, it's got this, multiple languages, you know, beside the issue of the vertical, very strong verticality, and then surprisingly, very strong horizontality of the millions of the windows. It's a little confusing. So just characterize, what, what kind of a building is this stylistically?
I see it as sort of a modern interpretation of an architecture that's mainly traviated with, you know, vertical and horizontal lines, with a gutsy sort of brick presence, in which the glass is allowed to expand more. And I don't see it as trying to be certainly like the 25-foot-wide buildings that you see, also paying a nod, nodding to the fact that it is a building on the edge of the district that has these buildings that do have a more gutsy presence than just the straightforward buildings.
All right. Yes, Diana?
This, Steve may have partly responded to my question, which is about the sense that, looking at other buildings in the district, that you do seem to be referencing, the base seems a little less solid, so to speak. And I wondered whether you considered, because the wind, the bottom windows are tall, and whether you considered maybe having the windows be black under the cornice, the signage band, just to give it a little more sense of, I wouldn't, I don't, I don't see the bulkhead being bigger or something, but I just have this sense that compared to some of the other buildings, it has a little less horizontal quality and weight at the bottom. Like, even the one you're, you were talking about, white, I'll call it the white building that you were looking at, has a little more, it seems almost to float a bit at the bottom.
It seems almost what?
To float a bit at the bottom was, from my perspective.
You know, I think that we've got a lot of masonry. We've got certainly, you know, a good, strong masonry here, we've got good, strong masonry here. I mean, when you see buildings that have a commercial base, often, very traditional, very authentic, they have cast iron columns and minimal, you know, structure expressed on the outside. And so, yes, we have, we don't have cast iron, but we have these brick piers, which are about, I don't know, they're two feet wide or so. And the infill is intended to be more open, as you would see.
Yeah, I was just looking at the horizontal issue, not the vertical. The verticals are strong, I agree. You know, the masonry verticals are a strong connection.
The horizontal panes, you're saying?
Yeah, just at the very top, underneath the signage band, that it seems...
Oh, I see. Well, the, these are like transoms, right? So the transom element, well, part of it is given over to louvers, which are required for air conditioning. But again, the horizontal, I mean, transom, transoms are by nature horizontally floating above the main store windows, and what we're proposing are horizontally proportioned window panes. There's no doubt about it.
Yeah, I was just looking at the, I'm fine with there being horizontal. I was looking at some of the others that seem to be closed at the top, or maybe they're covered by awnings. I think, I don't think so. I think they're just darkened, and it's just a, just a question. Thank you.
Everybody have questions?
Yeah, just a question about what you see from the back again, the rear. So the dark red is mechanical equipment, you're saying?
Yes. It's like, almost like a chimney, like, almost like a chimney.
Okay, okay.
So there's one on the left, that's the one on the left, and then there's one on the right.
Right, so the right is the same height?
Yes.
And so what's the height of that from the roof?
What is the height of that from the roof? It is nine?
Five foot five from the top of the parapet.
Five foot five above the parapet.
So that's only five feet above the parapet?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And, and so the elevator is...
The elevator is 16 feet above the parapet.
Is 16, so that means it's really, but you don't see it in the thing.
The elevator's set back, they look like they align, don't they? But they, they, one is taller than the other, it's just that the elevator is set back so much further.
So the elevator is back, is what you see back there?
This little, this tiny little piece here is the elevator. It looks like it, but it's set back like maybe 30 feet.
And so what's under the red, that is not your building, is something...
This is a neighboring building.
Okay.
Yeah. It's this jumble, you know, it's a jumble of buildings back there.
Right, it's just, yeah, sorry.
No, I was trying to just say that maybe that whole idea of emphasizing that, that vertical piece, the mechanical equipment is not, so, I don't, I don't know if it's, I mean, cause attention to itself, let's put it there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it could have been stuccoed, it could have been stuccoed, and I certainly have no objection to that.
And then in the other, and in the other shot where you show the, when you do show the elevator override, and it's visible from like, from the corner, you're saying you already push it back as far as it can go?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And so to blend in or to not be as obvious is a coloring question or a paint question?
Yeah, right. I'm just going back to the...
Right, I would, I would agree with Roberta, if there's ways to de-emphasize maybe some of the, I mean, you could easily do it, submit issue of material, and I think would just, again, not call too much attention to the, to the largest part of the building. I just have a question about Henry Street. Is Henry Street a wide street as well, or is it...
No.
Okay. You know, I...
But I think it's two-way.
It's two-way, but it's, but it's a standard, like 60-foot versus...
It's narrow, yeah.
Okay, it's one-way, it's 60 feet, okay. All right, I just, you know, just, can you go back to the elevation along Henry Street for a moment?
Yeah.
And, you know, I can understand sort of the vocabulary that you've chosen on Atlantic. Atlantic is a, is a wide street, it's very, it has a certain character to it, it has a lot of commercial activity. But I think, I'm just curious whether you've thought about a design which transitions a little bit as it moves into, I think, the more intimate character of Henry Street through its elevation and through its material, you know, whether you've thought about, actually, it's a corner site, and it does have a different relationship to the block, but it does also become the transitional site to, I think, a much more intimate character. So I don't know if you've thought about that.
Yeah, I mean, the, the commercial, right, goes all the way over to here.
Right.
And then we have the lobby. And so it's this element here that, yes, I think another interpretation could be, the thinking here was to, you know, emphasize the lobby by making what surrounds it more symmetrical and composed. We have masonry here, masonry here, and this is symmetrically composed. But you could say, well, we don't want to be symmetrical, we could be asymmetrical, and we could make it more brick-filled, knowing that still we have an opening that is a certain size, you know, to...
Is that all, is that actually one story, or is that two stories?
Yes, it is. It's one very tall story.
But it's for, isn't that where you have your entrance to the garage?
Yes.
So you have, you have a double height in your garage space?
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
You probably put, you know, mechanical, you know, ducts in there and that sort of thing, but it is like an extra tall space, yes. And the land kind of slopes down a little bit here.
Okay, but, I mean, interesting, you could even like step down the building if you want to do that, and, because you've got basically a volume...
On the window sides, it's...
Or something too, yeah.
In the apartment, they're huge in relationship to...
I think it's more contrasting, particularly on Henry Street, you can see, it's a little off. Okay. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we'll take testimony, and then we can have further discussions. All right, people are here to speak on this project. Let's see. Barbara Saye?
Barbara Saye of the Historic District Council. HDC found much to be admired in the proposed design, particularly the applicant's use of masonry and coins on the building's piers, and is glad to see a building proposed for this underutilized site. However, within this particular context, the proposed design presents some issues. Both the western end of Atlantic Avenue and this section of Henry Street are characterized by mid-to-late 19th century residential buildings with commercial storefronts. These low-scale buildings are elegant in their proportions and fenestration patterns, and our committee would prefer to see a proposed design that harmonizes better with these characteristics. The proposed building calls much attention to itself with the use of large, industrial-looking windows that might be more appropriate in Red Hook, for example. A more contextual design might be achieved by implementing a bay rhythm that breaks the building into smaller pieces. The height of the building also crowds its neighbors, particularly on Henry Street, and the rooftop accretions add further bulk that will be quite visible on the corner and from within Cobble Hill. Also on Henry Street, HDC found that the very tall base dwarfs those of 327 and 329 Henry Street, and the introduction of a marquee on this facade is out of place in the Cobble Hill Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Levine?
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Levine, Chair of Community Board Services Landmarks Committee. I just want to make notes that we're happy to see a building there on that site, and to be able to replace that gas station is a big improvement to the Cobble Hill District. But we do have major concerns about that particular building. Just some things we've heard today in some of the questions, and then I'll go over the specifics of the letter. We had the same concerns about the verticality as some of the questions you asked. And when you look at, I think it shows up the best in, on page 10, when you look down the building, down the street, you're seeing vertical lines. You're not seeing what a typical building looks like in front. So, and I assume that you'd see the same kind of verticality if you were standing and looking down Atlantic. So the, the main goal, or the main view of this building is that vertical. In fact, he used... the main goal or the main view of this building is that vertical. In fact, he used it, they used examples of, and they showed us examples, many of, some of which weren't in the district, some were, of what to use. And they used the building next to it with these tiny little vertical, you can't see this, but the tiny little lines that are in the building next to it that are vertical, almost is that to build any, I'd say excuse to call it the whole thing they're doing vertical, when that's, nannaramally, that's not what's typical of the Cobble Hill Historic District. So anyway, specifically, we took a vote at the full board of thirty-three yes to the motion, which was to disapprove, and two no's and one extension. The proposed new building had several glaring inconsistencies with the more commonly found design elements in the Cobble Hill Historic District. First, we found the historical, the horizontal bands between the building's stories, or if you might look at the other way, the, the large glass, being, the bands being too narrow. Secondly, the aluminum on the Henry Street elevation was too light, particularly when contrasted with the adjacent buildings' elevations on that block face. Third, the fenestration was entirely too overwhelming for the building, particularly the corner window treatment. Pretty much all of Cobble Hill has more plain fronts, does not have corners the way, for instance, Park Slope does in Brooklyn where they do have build-outs, maybe even turrets on the corners. Typically, these are very simple, plain buildings in general, and simple, plain corners. Fourth, the overall building design lacks a rhythm with the neighboring buildings along Atlantic Avenue and along Henry Street. I just want to point out that was mentioned the first time I heard today about the signage being backlit. I think that's an important issue of looking at the signage. Typically, the typical goose neck or frontlit signs would be more appropriate. Okay. Fifth, we found the stacking of rooftop mechanicals to be entirely too bulky. Now, as you show pictures, it's very hard to see. In fact, now you can't see on top of that building the bulkhead. I mean, they've done it, so it's hardly even there. And we didn't realize until we got to almost the last couple of slides when he showed, when they showed the full designs.
Mr. Levine, your time is almost up. It's actually up, so if you could maybe just conclude the points.
Okay, in effect, all right, that's basically, in effect, they built the building on top. It's not a bulkhead. It's a building that's a third of the width, which is more than a width of a regular building. And so I think that the height is too big, and the whole thing doesn't fit the Cobble, Cobble Hill Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you. Christabel Gough?
Christabel Gough for the Society for the Architecture of the City. The people of Cobble Hill are jealous guardians of their roof lines, and I'd like to add that over the last thirty years, I have seen this neighborhood has been incredibly diligent in following preservation issues, the Community Board and the Cobble Hill Association. The limited height district, in effect since nineteen sixty-nine, has kept Cobble Hill secure from upward expansion, and bulkheads are scrutinized more closely here than they might be in neighborhoods where they are seen against a background of taller buildings. It would be helpful to look at ways to modify the rooftop mechanicals with a view to lowering their profile, so that the new building can keep well within this unusually restrictive tradition. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Abraham?
Thank you. I'm representing the Cobble Hill Association. Cobble Hill Association is here today to ask the Landmarks Preservation Committee Commission to reject the Certificate of Appropriateness application for one twelve Atlantic Avenue. We have three primary concerns: the appropriateness of the proposed structure, the overall size of the structure, its bulk in relation to all other buildings in Cobble Hill and along Atlantic Avenue, and the tenant-access structures on the roof that rise above the fifty-foot height limitation. The community feels strongly that the proposed building is neither contextual nor consistent with the Cobble Hill Historic District. It is an attractive, professionally designed, but starkly modern building that would be home almost anywhere in America, but not necessarily appropriate for Cobble Hill. The architect has continually emphasized his embrace of the anomalies he has found, anomalies he has found throughout the neighborhood, and their inclusion in the design he has shown today, and has included them in the design he has shown today. But the fact that there are anomalies and differences, perhaps even random elements, shows that they are definitely not features that are typical of the Cobble Hill Historic District. Cobble Hill has no buildings with entrances that are marquees like on Henry Street. Cobble Hill has no buildings that have the Shoji Street horizontal mullion style windows there. Cobble Hill has no buildings with floor-to-ceiling windows. Cobble Hill has no buildings that are so starkly modern without relating to their surrounding structures. Cobble Hill has no industrial factory-style buildings. Cobble Hill has no buildings that have the red brick with gold metal flakes. Cobble Hill has no buildings that have the zipper brick pattern on the brickwork. Cobble Hill has no historic buildings with intentionally asymmetrical fenestration. Cobble Hill has no buildings with the vitrines that you see on the ground floor. Cobble Hill has no buildings, especially no, Cobble Hill has no historic buildings that have the full glass corner treatment, especially at such a gateway along Atlantic Avenue, gateway to Cobble Hill. And Cobble Hill has no buildings that have the big glass tenant-access penthouses on the roof that really are rising well above the fifty-foot height limit. And Cobble Hill has no enormous roof bulkheads with private areas being created on the roof. And in general, Cobble Hill has no corner buildings that have massive lot line to lot line facades on each face. So in fact, with the exception of two tiny corbels on the Atlantic Avenue facade, the applicant would be hard pressed to find any single feature that is typical of, or can even really be found in the neighborhood, to represent the historic district. And so we ask, can a building composed more of anomalies actually be, can that be called contextual? The community's main takeaway is that the primary objective is to maximize profit by pushing the allowable envelope to the max. Fitting into the neighborhood, however, is not the primary objective. So-
If you can just wrap up, because your time's up.
Enhancing and celebrating Cobble Hill or Atlantic Avenue is not the objective. And we think Cobble Hill deserves better, and we strongly believe the architect and developer are capable of doing better. So we hope and strongly recommend that LPC will reject the designers present.
I have both my testimony and testimony of two neighbors who are unable to be here. I'm going to first read the testimony of, or a letter from David Wang, which reads as follows: "I am a resident of Pacific Street between Clinton and Henry Streets. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed new building at the corner of Atlantic and Henry in the Cobble Hill Historic District. The height and bulk of the proposed new building is incompatible with the low-scale historic community in which it will be located. The developer proposes a five, fifty-foot-high mixed-use building that will fill the entire lot and will be topped by an elevator mechanical and, mechanicals and terraces. Nearly twenty-two feet of mechanical bulkheads will be visible from three directions: Atlantic, Henry, and Pacific. This seventy-two-foot-high structure will loom over the adjacent forty-foot building on Henry and the adjacent twelve-to-fifteen-foot building on Pacific Street. And because the bulkheads have glass windows, a building, the building will shine like a beacon across the Historic District at night. As someone who has recently spent a lot of money on mock-ups and inspections to prove that not even an inch of our new air conditioning system would show from the street, this proposal is really offensive. You cannot propose, impose a different standard on existing homeowners and expect them to have respect for your efforts if even one inch of rooftop mechanicals is objectionable on one building in the Historic District, but twenty-two feet of mechanicals are just fine right across the street." My testimony. I'm a resident of Cobble Hill and a former president of the Cobble Hill Association. I also oppose this building on the grounds of height, bulk, and design. With respect to the rooftop structures, simply put, we do not understand why a fifty-foot-high building requires twenty-two feet of windowed bulkheads on its roof. These mechanicals exceed the bulk and height of those on the roof of both old and new buildings in the neighborhood, and will have a significant impact on the low-rise character of the neighborhood. Some of the mechanicals appear to have been put on the roof so that space in the cellar can be used for non-residential parking spots. Others appear to be related to multiple staircases connecting apartments to rooftop terraces. The twenty-two-foot elevator bulkhead remains a mystery. The height of this building and the rooftop structures is one that the developer has gone to great lengths to obscure. Although the Cobble Hill and Community Board presentation materials show that the rooftop mechanicals would be visible from Atlantic and Henry, the developer did not present a single view of the building from Pacific Street from within the Historic District, which we submit is the most important view.
I'm, I'm sorry, your time is up. My time's, okay. Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Judy Francis. Just to remind everybody, each person will be given three
Hi. My name is Judy Francis. I speak today not as a thirty-year resident of Cobble Hill and Brooklyn Heights Land Historic Districts, nor as a resident of Pacific Street, but though, all, all that is true. I'm actually here today to talk about, to speak as an advertising executive. In my work, I'm not allowed to put marbles in the soup to falsely present my clients' products, nor can I write claims that are just not true. I am surprised at, at what I have seen over two community meetings and today here, that the developer shows in his renderings fifty-year-old trees that do not exist on the streets, the streetscape. On Henry Street, the view that they showed, there was a tree that would be in the middle of Henry Street. It obscures the fenestration and obviously obscures what we have already heard about is a gross, an egregious size of the mechanicals. He speaks of it as, as at the edge of the district. In fact, we think of it as at the gateway of the district, and it's actually dead center in the middle of two historic districts, Cobble Hill as well as, as Brooklyn Heights. He referred five times to the industrial nature of the surrounding buildings. I live in this community. There are some industrial buildings that have been transformed into residential buildings. This is a residential neighborhood. And yes, while we really want a building on this corner, and a good building, one that, that fits in the nature of the community, on the Henry Street side, that is residential. On the back of it, it is residential, a hundred percent residential. There is one building that will be transformed shortly, probably. It's owned by Long Island College Hospital, and will be set, will be transformed into a residential building. These are, this is not an industrial or a commercial area. The, the last claim that I would not be able to make as an advertising executive is to actually boldly say before you that there's zero visibility on mechanicals. It's just not true. Using trees and tric, trickery to mask what's really inappropriate bulk, inappropriate heights, inappropriate fenestration is, in my, in my lexicon, false advertising. And I ask you to reject this and ask them to go back and really design something that is appropriate to the gateway to this great district. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lori Duncan.
I haven't prepared anything, and I haven't done this before, but the, the factory building that's been referenced many times today, I live in that building, and I am in favor of this new building. Our bulkhead, as was pointed out, is rather large, but still not really seen from the street. I mean, if you really look for it, it's there, but I don't think people walk past it and go, oh my God, that's like an eyesore. Our building extends from Atlantic Avenue to Pacific Street, and there are mechanicals on the Pacific Street side as well, which again, aren't that significant. They're not really visible from the street. For seventeen years, I've lived in that building. I live in the three windows that he mentioned in his presentation, above the word "building" on Atlantic Pacific Building in terms of the sign. We've lived with an eyesore of a gas station on the corner for, for all of that time. And while some people are saying that this corner is a gateway to Cobble Hill versus a gateway to Brooklyn Heights, I think it's a corner that's been an eyesore for a very long time. And I think the proposed building for that site is aesthetically pleasing. I think it's not a cookie cutter of everything else in the building. And I understand in a Historic District, there is a desire to keep everything rather uniform, but I think the neighborhood has changed a lot in seventeen years that I've been there. And I think having something that still looks good and it doesn't stick out like a sore thumb, which I don't believe it does, obviously other people may disagree, I think having something that works as a transitional building on that corner, which has been an eyesore corner, is, is an improvement for the neighborhood. And while there may need to be changes regarding, you know, the height of a bulkhead, I'm not an expert on those things. I can only tell you from an aesthetic point of view, and as someone who lives there and has a vested interest in the look of the neighborhood and the function of the neighborhood, I think it's, it's a welcome addition, and, and I would like to see it move forward as it is. I, I think it's a, they've done a really terrific job in taking the character of the neighborhood, not just the physical buildings, but the character of the neighborhood and what the neighborhood is and strives to be in that location, and done a really good job in, you know, proposing a building that I think works really well on that spot.
Thank, thank you. Roy Sloan?
Thank you very much. I agree with a lot of what many of the previous speakers said, including that the Cobble Hill Historic District has changed a lot in the seventeen, last seventeen years. I think it's gotten to be a lot better district due to a lot of the work that the commission has done and as well as the Civic Association has done. The Cobble Hill Historic District does just sort of keep improving, and we'd like to keep that going. I'm going to read a letter from Lori and Stanley Moore, who are architects who have testified in front of you many times, and we rely on for their advice. But personally, I want to focus on the bulkhead. I want to agree with some of the statements that we did not really notice the bulkheads in the initial presentation. It was very faint. I have seen many, many presentations, and I must say, we really barely saw it. And I, we think that in the first time we saw it, that it was even fainter than that. We did find that there seemed to be artful trees and branches placed over almost all of the elements that we have been concerned about, which is a matter of concern to us. So we found, we became much more alarmed when we found in the BSA application, not in anything that the applicant presented to us, a, an axiometric drawing of the bulkhead, and we find that it is much more substantial. I'm going to pass that out, but I want to just read that it is, it is called a Unit B and Unit A roof access. It does have a screen wall that plainly will come up to and be visible in the front that we don't think is shown on the drawings. It definitely shows glass in it. It looks to us like there is a, an elevator entrance on that perhaps. And it has been our experience that bulkheads do not have windows. Windows are for living spaces, and to have an elevator bulkhead on top of a mechanical just makes no sense. So I'd like to just pass this around here that I think will be very helpful to you all. These literally look like structures that are on top of the building. They are, we understand bulkheads, we understand the elevator, but we do not understand why there is a bulkhead on top of this glass building, and we think it is a violation. So let me just move on. That's my personal thought on it. I want, would like to read the letter of Stanley and Lori Moore. "As longtime residents of Cobble Hill and as architects who have designed projects in the Historic District, we welcome the development of this prominent corner in Cobble Hill, as I, I think all Cobble Hill residents do, converting a gas station into residential appropriate commercial use. And we do favor stores there. However, the solution being presented to the community is a jarring intrusion into the Historic District. There appears to be two glassed-in rooms on the roof at a sixty-foot elevation, clearly in violation of the fifty-foot height limitation. This illegal construction is exacerbated by the elevator-" This illegal construction is exacerbated by the elevator and stair penthouse, which looms high above the building to serve these two rooms. Two, the tall vertical brick pylons encasing unevenly awkwardly spaced windows creates a facade language most foreign to the brownstone scale and its windows. Three, the token historical gestures of the emaciated aluminum cornice and brick crenelation to..."
Excuse me, sorry. Your time is, yeah, your time is...
"...to make this building belong in the historic district. Thank you very much."
Okay, thanks. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, we did get in writing as well, as Community Board Six did submit their resolution as Mr. Levine noted, and they are not supporting the project.
I'm sorry?
There are, let me just read it to make sure that the result, to disapprove this application. All right. Would you like to respond back? Thank you.
With respect to the bulkheads, first of all, the trees are what they are. There was no photo shopping or addition of trees. In fact, I think what we did was to try to get that view from Pacific Street, we had to remove trees to open up a view more, but there were no trees that were added. The bulkhead consists...
By photo shop.
Yeah, by photo. There, I think there are three or four arrays of things on the roof. There's the elevator bulkhead. That's the, that is the only thing that's visible from Henry Street and Atlantic.
Right. I think it'd be helpful if you could just go to the plan which shows the roof, the roof plan, and then sort of point out to us the elements. Yeah, right here.
Okay. This is the elevator. This is the thing that goes up, the only tall element. This is the fire stair. Two means of egress.
So the tall element, the elevator over on, that's the 22 feet?
That's right. On top of the elevator.
Okay. On top of the elevates and addition, no? It's a total...
The override on top of the elevator is the 21 feet that we...
Is that actually, is that elevator the most overriding, small override that one can obtain? Is it one of the, you know, machine roomless overrides kind of things?
The machine room is actually the southern.
Right, but I mean, I've seen elevators that have a relatively low overhead override. It's called the Gen 2s. Those Gen 2s, they have like a sort of like four feet or six feet override above the floor.
Right. Michael, can you use your mic?
Oh, sorry.
That's good.
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify that. You know, is this the absolute minimum override that technically can be accomplished with an elevator that would appropriately serve this building?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we can look into that. I mean, so far as I know, it is. Then we have the fire stairs, which are the two fire stairs. Then we have a stair that comes from each unit. This is something that's completely as of right, normal, and it is nothing more than a stair coming up to a tiny landing which brings you to your rooftop. This is part of their space. And yes, this is glass. This is not an egress stair that has to be fire-rated, and it is not visible from anywhere.
And this...
Zero visibility.
And the height of the, this...
Maybe nine feet.
Okay, so those are nine feet.
So these are all low. These are low. This is low. Then the mechanical, that's an interior space, and that also is maybe 10 feet tall. That is not visible from anywhere. The only thing that is visible is this shaft here, the elevator shaft, from this array here, and then these two mechanicals are visible from Pacific Street.
Is that for the garage?
Is it exhaust?
Actually, one of them is for a potential, they don't know what's going to go on the ground floor, so they have to provide, are they going to have a clothing store, are they going to have a restaurant? If they have a restaurant, then they have to have, provide for ventilation going in for this.
The flu, right.
So that is that one. This one is, as I understand, unassigned. It is there for a possible...
There's mechanical things that haven't been accommodated for yet for design, that to replace older for those.
But it couldn't be incorporated into the main footprint of the building?
Or, 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 or it couldn't.
And I only say that because it seems like an appendage that sort of sticks out.
Or you lose interior space.
You lose interior.
And that's, is that what you're seeing from the rear, right? Which one, that one on the bottom?
You see, you see this one and that one.
Can we go back to the, your drawing of, or the photograph of the rear?
From Pacific?
From Pacific, exactly.
Remembering that shows those items.
Oops, oops.
Right, yeah.
Sorry, go back. So it's that one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that one.
A little taller than the five, because you said you were five feet or something above?
Yeah, what you're seeing on the one on the left is actually the fourth floor beside, which is taller than the adjacent building. So you're seeing the fourth floor.
So this portion is flush with the fourth floor, and this portion is the part that goes above the roof. Same over here.
So, and those elements go, yeah, they go higher than the roof, right?
Yes. I mean, this one has to because it's ventilation for the, I mean, this other one, frankly, if there's no need for it, it could just disappear or it could be chopped down flat with the roof.
Right, it seems like you've got it there, but you haven't really programmed it.
It's reserved.
And so the highest point that you've shown in gray, is that the, is that the elevator overrun?
Is that it?
No.
That's it right there. That view from...
And what is that other gray I see, the small box? Yeah, that.
Well, that's, is that the fire stair?
The fire stair.
It's the fire stair.
So you see the stairs too?
The fire stair, yeah.
And the elevator is really serving, I guess it's serving your mechanical room because your mechanical, which is there in addition to those top two tenants, right? So the elevator gets the top, the roof deck is only for the top two tenants.
Yes. Well, there's, the roof has a mechanical area, what is that, a farm, a farm of low condensers that are like 3 feet tall. So you have to have access to that. So that's the...
Okay, that's the bulkhead.
...issue. I just want to, perhaps I may have overemphasized this night. I don't mean to overemphasize it. I don't see this as an industrial building. I do see it on the edge of the district. I see it as on the edge of the district where some of the very uniform characteristics of Cobble Hill begin to break away. I mean, it is not as uniformly sort of red brick with the square openings. It's loosening up a little with different types going into it. I don't consider the windows that we're closing to be industrial. I consider them to be more modern. I mean, I think that a vertically proportioned pane is a more traditional one, and you can see plenty of buildings today and in the 30s that were built with more cores, and they're not industrial buildings, they're residential buildings. So I don't see this as trying to be an industrial building at all. But I do see this being transitional on the edge of the district. And in terms of the height of the building, I mean, the building is 50 feet high, but I think if you look at the context photos, it is not looming over the building at all. It's very much in keeping with the height of the surrounding buildings.
All right. Are there questions for the applicant? Any other questions? All right, yes, do you want to say something?
No questions.
Are we in comments now?
I think we can go into comments. I just want to make one comment, and then, this is just overall, and I think we've heard testimony on it. I think the fact that this gas station is being redeveloped to a building form, which I think, leaving aside the details, the form itself, I think, is very contextual. And I think regardless if called a gateway or a transition, I think it holds a very important corner of the district. And so I think that that redevelopment is very appropriate. So I just want to start with that. Okay, Eddie, you want to...
Well, I just, I'm wondering, would any other four, this is almost 50, 50-foot-tall building, have less of a bulkhead? I mean, it seems to me since that we're, it's a large building, it's taking up, you know, what would otherwise be a multiple townhouse site, wouldn't it have the same size bulkhead? It seems yes. I mean, unless, as you pointed out, perhaps the elevator can be a little bit smaller, but I tend to think that maybe it does function sort of like this extra-large chimney if you, if it's really articulated in the way that you're proposing. I also really actually appreciate, despite the fact that it might not be exactly typical of the Cobble Hill surface treatment of the brick, the, I appreciate the texture and the kind of relief, the attention that you've paid to, to the texture of the, of the brick. I think that the, I think that the windows, what you're describing as modern, are confusing, these horizontal windows and the otherwise vertical articulation of the facade, but, you know, that's again, a kind of a mix mash of stylistic information, so it's strange to me. I guess, I would say that for the most part, it's appropriate-ish, you know? I think I would want to see maybe more brick and going to Diana's point earlier, a more solid base. You've opened up the three stories above so much that in a sense, the base could get more solid, even though I know that that's retail and wants to allow for that kind of the visibility of the product that's in there, but maybe more solidity, which means that there would be more brick, which means there'd be more of that articulated texture of the, of the brick that you've proposed. But I, you know, I, I mean, other than doing a series of townhouses there, I really can't imagine that you would have been able to achieve a more kind of quiet or large building on that corner site.
Right. And just your point about the mechanicals, and this is more sort of a technical standpoint, which is that when you have buildings which have a limited height district, the zoning does specify the amount of what they call permitted obstructions above a building. So it does sort of contemplate that you will have mechanicals, and I think your point is well taken, which is this is a larger building, a larger footprint, and what would be otherwise smaller in footprint mechanicals over many buildings. This is all being sort of concentrated on. My only concern is about trying to find ways, I think you've chosen as an architectural element to, to, to highlight them where most people want the bulkheads to disappear. And so I think it's really a matter of material and treatment and color, particularly the rear, that can make it, I think, a quieter form. The fact that you have the overrun of, I think the 22 feet is from the roof line, not above the bulkhead, right? So it's not...
22 feet is from the roof.
From the roof. So it's 10 and 10 above that, right? 10 or 12 above that, which I think we have seen somewhat standard. And at the rear, it seems that actually it's really set back. What seems to be looming at the rear is really the two red portions, which are the chimneys, partly because they're not even programmed, seem somewhat questionable. And I would agree with Commissioner about, are there ways to introduce more brick and less transparency without taking away the idea that this is a modern building, but make it relate better? And I would say, particularly on Henry Street, where I think you want to have a transition to, to the buildings, to, that would be to the, to the south. Other comments? Yes, Michael?
I, in general, find the building to be aesthetically pleasing, and I agree with my colleagues' comments about the brick masonry. When she asked how the applicant would characterize this building, it made me think of my own visceral response to this, and my own visceral response to the facades of this building is a 20th-century industrial building in a 19th-century neighborhood. And so that, I never want us to become slaves to context, but there, this building lacks the contextual presence that I think is necessary for this neighborhood and needs to be reworked.
Okay, yes, Diana?
I, in general, I find that it's a nice use of material and design, and even the finessration, hearing some of what my colleagues are saying. I do think there's a lot of detailing and other things where there has been an attempt really to, to make it more contextual. My original remark was looking to maybe fill in the transoms at the top to give it more solidity around the base and particularly at the corner, but there may be other solutions to that. I do think that the bulk, the size and the general treatment are reasonable, and maybe it's just some more minor, you know, tweaking that could go on to respond to people's concerns. And with regard to the visibility of the bulkheads, I agree, it should be minimized as much as possible, but I think it does need a large bulkhead. Corner location, it's always going to be somewhat visible, so.
Roberta and then Michael, yes.
Okay, so overall, I think that the bulk of the building is, could be acceptable and appropriate, considered appropriate. And I admire many parts of it. I think that the, I think that the brick material is fine. But I think also that, just in terms of the fact that the verticality is so emphasized, that there are ways to maybe lessen it, you know, that when you're looking from the corner down Henry Street, what you do see are just the vertical lines. And if the bottoms of, the turn at the bottom of the windows came out, that came out towards the street, or if that was masonry or something else, you wouldn't have that problem. I do think that's a problem because it emphasizes the size of the building, that verticality makes this building look larger than it is. That's, and so I think that it could be worked on there. And for me, that height of the first floor is a lot, if you are trying to be conceptual, I think that having what amounts to a double-height first floor makes to the smaller apartment buildings on Henry Street is a problem in terms of... I think it should be lower. Or that the transom above the retail entrance should be solid or joined or somehow, right now, it's like we're emphasizing the transom above the entrance, which makes it look taller even than it is. So somehow if that wasn't emphasized as a greater element, it's steadily done more as an horizontal bend in some sort of technical factor, lessen the height effect. And yes, I do think that we should lower the height of the elevator bulkhead if possible. And we have seen some other examples here over the last few months where they use a different type of elevator, so I think it should be investigated.
Michael?
Okay. A couple of things. First of all, I agree with what most folks have said so far, in that I think that while the building in general is pleasing, and I think the renderings show that it more or less does fit in quite nicely while still maintaining a kind of contemporary appearance, I think that the one thing that did strike me about the streetscape is kind of what was mentioned by Roberta just now, is that, or, it's not that the verticality per se is, is anti-contextual. What joins all these buildings is the punched windows. And I think that, that by adding masonry, perhaps in lieu of some of the spantral elements, maybe not in all the windows, maybe on a few, maybe on, you know, as a gradation moving from, from one, from one area where it's more solid to the corner where it's more open, maybe there's a way to re-explore the use of the punched window, which seems to be pretty much the uniting factor of the streetscape as presented on Page Six. A way to bring that into the composition somehow without making the project retro or, you know, imitative literally of its surroundings. And on the elevator, I'm wondering, I mean, it looked, the roof plan shows that the entire roof with the, with the exclusion of the mechanical spaces is devoted to the tenants and for egress. I'm, I don't, usually when we see an elevator on the roof, it's because there's a community space on the roof that requires handicapped access. If the roof is really, I think, used for convenience of the individual tenants, I'm not sure that it requires handicapped access, in which case the elevator wouldn't have to come up here and could stop on the top floor, and therefore you could lop off a good 10 of that 16 or 21-foot run. And that might be explored as well.
We haven't closed the hearing. Do you want to respond to that issue about the use of the terrace?
Yeah, the terrace is, as Michael said, it's primarily for the two penthouses and then occasional access for the mechanical equipment.
So does it require handicapped access or no?
Could you, so is that something you could quite easily do, which is basically... Could you, so is that something you could quite easily do, which is basically take the elevator only to the top floor?
Well, there you go.
Well, that took care of that. Yeah, yes, please, Fred.
Okay. I also find the building generally to be in the realm of acceptability. I think the massing is, responds not only to the zoning but to the context and to the site. I find two things, I don't want to repeat a few other things I agree with, just a couple of new thoughts. On the Atlantic Avenue elevation regarding the windows, you know, usually the windows on a building tell the story of what the building's about, but I don't know what the story of this is. You know, we have little ones, then some big ones, and little ones again, and some big ones, and then a really big one. What is the story there? I don't quite get it. And I don't understand how they, those windows necessarily respond to the rooms behind them. So I would look for something kind of more rationally responsive to a building that tells a clear story. Also, on the base, I'm wondering if the idea of, I think it was Diana that brought this up earlier, perhaps the, that brick, which I like the notion of that interesting brick, maybe it's brought up higher, a little bit higher, to reduce the legginess of the building. And then my more fundamental thought is on the Henry Street side, I think the, again, the massing of the building is fine, but I think there you have an opportunity to begin to step down the scale of the windows to respond to the scale of the windows to which it is immediately adjacent. I don't think the building has to step down. There's a taller building, two or three down the way, but the windows seem to have an opportunity to scale down. And those windows are in very small little bedrooms, so I would think that that's easily accomplished. Thanks. Just want to say one other thing. I think some of the views, the oblique views up and down Atlantic Avenue, actually make this building look kind of interesting. And yes, it's not a building that looks exactly like any other building in the district. And to me, that's a positive, not a negative. It's a building that has its own character. And I think part of that character is achieved through the cornice, through the coloring of the brick, and through its just own internal ways of articulating it itself. So again, I just don't think we're looking for a hodgepodge of elements that come from exactly the context, but a response to the context from an architect designing a new building.
All right. So, just to sum that up, I think that it seems that the commission, for most part, I think the shape and form, I think, the commission is very supportive of. It seems that there are really two elements we're talking about broadly speaking, and I think they can be taken care of very easily. So one is the bulkhead itself. You can bring that down. You can look at the colors and show us those views. And in terms of both, and it seems, you know, okay, just on Henry Street, of sort of breaking down the scale, and even if it's to rationalize what's happening on Atlantic itself, it does seem that it's really about thinking, maybe refining the amount of glazing and brick that you're talking about, just that combination that could make a very big difference to the facades. And, you know, we can all sketch it and come up with something, but I think as designers, you could do that, since you've heard our comments on it. And in general, I would just also sort of add to some of my colleagues over here, that the idea of having a contemporary building and with a contemporary interpretation of elements is a good thing versus something that is maybe an easier thing to do, which is just emulate exactly what's happening elsewhere. And I think that's appropriate, so. So we look forward to seeing you back.
Thank you very much.
Can we call back to 03 prospect?